I'm James Cook. I'm a candidate for the Schuylkill County Board of Commissioners, but for Halloween, I dressed up as a moderator. So, I have a couple announcements first. There was some scheduling mixed up. So, we have two candidates that aren't here through no fault of their own, and that's Jay Patrick and Lucina Riggs. So, don't think badly of them for not being here. It's just some confusion. What we're gonna do is try to get this going quickly. I'm gonna give each of the candidates that are here two minutes to introduce themselves, and then I'm gonna start off with the first question, and then we're gonna open it up for questions from you guys. If you don't have questions, I can keep bombarding them for a while, but I'm hopeful that you'll take advantage of the opportunity to get your individual questions answered. So, if we could start out with introductions, and you guys need a mic?
I don't, I'm alright.
I'm fine.
Alright. Okay, question. John? Thank you so much for having us here today. I appreciate it. It's nice to see you all again. I'm running for city council because I love this community of ours. Came here just over 13 years ago to serve as a high school principal at Redmond High School. And since that time, I've fallen in love with this beautiful place and the people that make it so. And during my time here, I've been able to become an innovator in the world of education, and Redmond is now home to the only charter school of its kind in the country, in Redmond Proficiency Academy. And through that process, it's allowed me to learn about how to run complex organizations. RPA is a multimillion-dollar nonprofit organization that employs over 60 people in downtown Redmond on an annual basis. And we have made a part of our mission to be engaged with the community. And for me, when my daughter left for college a couple of years ago, I had a choice to make about where I wanted to live and where I wanted to go. And as I was driving back from dropping her off at college, I got to think about all the things that I wanted to, about where I wanted to live. And I found them all here in Redmond. And at that point, I decided that this is where I want to finish my career and retire. And as a result of that, I was fortunate that an opening came up on city council, and I was selected to fill that opening, because that's my way of giving back to the community that's given me so much. I want Redmond to be the best place in Oregon to live, and to work, and to raise a family, and to retire. And I wanna give back to the community that's given me so much. And so, I appreciate the opportunity today to talk to you and answer questions that you have, and I look forward to the possibility of serving as your city councillor for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Chrissiana Clark Endicott, and you'll have to forgive my attire today. I actually have several events, and I was supposed to speak last Wednesday, and there was a little bit of a scheduling, which is totally fine, but today, I'm Heidi. So, that's okay, because it's Halloween, and I like to have fun. And I do want council too. I think that part of public service has gotta be fun. I'm a fourth-generation Oregonian, born and raised in Beaverton, and I went to graduate, I graduated from Atlantic University, double majoring in business economics and English. My late husband and I settled in Sherwood, where he was an estate attorney. Unfortunately, he had a brain tumor, and he passed. At that time, I had a seven-year-old boy and an eight-year-old girl, and my two little babies looked at me and said, "What are you going to do?" And I decided, he was the seated city councillor at the time, and I decided that I would raise our family up, and I would run for his council seat. I was not appointed to the seat. I ran for the seat, and I won it. And I decided that I was gonna fill the family opination and complete the service. But what I found is I loved the job. And so, I ran for another term on city council, and I then ran for mayor, and a second term for mayor, and was elected to each and every one. I love serving on the city council. One of the things that I love to do is bring great projects and serve the citizens. Two of the things that I'd like to bring to the city of Redmond are an active-duty military banner program. We have a wonderful, wonderful commitment here in the city of Redmond to our military that have served, our veteran community. I'd like to bring that excitement for our active military duty who are currently serving and from the Redmond community. We completed this project in Sherwood, and we snitched the idea from the city of Beaverton. And it's very popular, and I think that it's wonderful for the families to be able to see their military banners of their family members as they drive in the downtown area, and give honor to them, and thanks to them, and know that their city is behind their son, their daughter, their aunt, their uncle. It's just a great program. The other thing is a community garden. One of the things I love about a community garden, and we built one in Sherwood, is that it brings generations together. A lot of time in our lives now, we do a lot of this. And what I like is more this, the interpersonal communication and encouraging intergenerational work, and so, I would love to bring that community garden experience here to the city of Redmond. It was wildly popular and successful in Sherwood, and I would love that opportunity. In fact, the fire department was right next door to our community garden. They bought two plots, and they harvested extra produce, and ended up donating that to the Helping Hands Food Bank. And I'm sure that, and there was also a Girl Scout troop that did that. And I'm sure that there would be excitement around that as well. So, thank you for the opportunity to serve you, and I'm looking forward to your questions.
Okay, first question. As you've mentioned, and I think everyone here agrees, Redmond's a special place to live. Right now, we're about 30,000 people. In 20, 25 years, that could be 50,000 people. What does the council need to be doing now to plan for that growth and keep Redmond a special place to live? And since John started last time, you wanna start first then?
Sure. So, one of the things that I, as an elected official, have always kind of set myself to do is continue to be involved in the county, so the regional, the county, and the state government. I think that by having a voice in those different areas of Lincoln City and at the county government, you, as you are involved in those areas, there is a voice for Redmond as you grow. And it's important for communities to define themselves. Each and every community is unique and has its own feeling. Redmond is not Bend. Bend is not Redmond, thank goodness. I mean, I think that it's important to define a community, and I think that by involving yourselves in all of the layers of government that exist, that's how you make great progress.
I think as we talk about growth, we have to talk about the need for housing, not just affordable housing, but housing for all walks of life. We have to talk about maintaining our infrastructure, so that we have quality roads and quality sewer and water systems. And I think we have to talk about jobs. We've gotta make sure that we have jobs available, so that young people that graduate from here have the opportunity to live and work here. And none of those come with simple answers. They all have, they're all complex problems that require lots of thinking. And I think one of the things we have to do to manage growth is effectively get more voices in the room to talk about not only what do we want Redmond to look like in the future, but how are we gonna get there? I believe that we're best served when we listen to the most people, and we get people engaged in the process, not just in the sense of voting, but in the sense of asking people what they want to see and how we can get there. And so, I wanna be a proponent of a program that brings people into that conversation. When it comes to the infrastructure necessary for 50,000 people, I think we've got a good start. Redmond's done a great job of maintaining its roads. Redmond's done a great job of planning for the future relative to our needs for water and sewer. And we need to continue making those investments as we move forward. We need to make sure that when we create neighborhoods, we follow our great neighborhood principles, and we put commerce centers within our neighborhoods, so that people can walk down the street to buy a gallon of milk or to have a cup of coffee. We don't have to be car-dependent. The other thing we know as a region as we grow over the next 20 years is we've gotta talk about the possibilities for fixed route transit, and that's a large discussion that requires lots of people in the room. And finally, I think some of this also is about making sure we have adequate and affordable high-quality childcare for our families, so that families can work and know that their kids are well taken care of in our community. I think if we do those things, and if we get, make a commitment today to investing in our future, we have the opportunity to create the Redmond that we want to see. And that's what I wanna do as your city councillor, is engage you to help all of us build the Redmond we wanna see in the future.
All right. How good. We have questions?
You brought it up, childcare. St. Charles just voted to close the birthing center at Redmond. What are your thoughts on that, and how do we protect mothers that are in the middle of it?
Did everyone hear that?
I think you should repeat the question, please.
The question regarded St. Charles announcing that they're gonna be closing the birthing center, and what the council can do about that.
Thank you. It's a great question. It's a very unfortunate situation. As you might be aware, I took a very public stance against the closing of the birthing center, and I was part of a council that did so as well. I think in a community of our size, it's important that we have services for our children and families. We have services for women's healthcare, and I wanna make sure that St. Charles, in their effort to look after the bottom line, which they have to do, also make sure that we look after our citizens to ensure that our needs are met here locally. I think one of the active steps we can take is over the course of the next several months while that closing happens, is continue to advocate for not closing it. I mean, I think that we need to continue saying, "We're not okay with this. We want to have a birthing center here. We want quality healthcare for women, quality healthcare for infants." And so, continue to do that. I think the other thing that has to happen is we've gotta lobby for more seats on the board of directors. I think there needs to be a Redmond voice on the St. Charles board, and I intend to continue talking with folks at St. Charles about the need to fill that, because we've got to, we've got to continue standing up for children and families, and for women in our community, and I think standing up to this decision is a part of that.
I hundred percent agree with John. Did I answer wrong? Yeah, sorry. So, I hundred percent, I one hundred percent agree with John on this issue. I also was in attendance at the council meeting, where the entire council was urging and passed a resolution against them closing the St. Charles Birthing Center. I spoke with many citizens, not only there, but also at my daughter's soccer game, within the school, and they were all horrified that this decision had been made. But as John pointed out, in many ways, the decision was made for us. And that goes back to my point that when you do not have elected officials and citizens at these boards and commissions and involved, you lose your voice. And so, I think that advocating for us to, we did at one point have three seats, and it was allocated to Redmond to have those seats, and that sort of dwindled away. And that is something that just cannot be. And I think that continuing to advocate for them not to do it is also an excellent idea. Unfortunately, they are their own business, and they're due to make their own business decision, but there is no reason why, as a community, we cannot come together. They, I listened to their argument that they will still be providing women's healthcare up until birth, they will just not be providing birth services. And while that is nice, having delivered two babies of my own and being only about 15 minutes from the hospital, I don't know that I could've waited another hour. And I think that it would've been very difficult, and it could have caused some health risks. And I think that many women are in that situation. And then we have to also think of our neighbors in Crimwell and Matras, so who had chosen to come to Redmond. So, I think that this is even more of an issue for our outline communities and Redmond. And so, I think that in the future, we definitely should try to re-obtain those seats on board and help to influence positively for Redmond community.
One of the things that, as you brought up, I'm very concerned about, and elected leaders. You talked about bringing more people into the conversation. I wanna thank, I want you to think about the Portland Bridge. All the people that got brought into the conversation, and 10 years later, there's no bridge, because everybody had a voice. People who do not have any responsibility for their decision. As elected leaders, you have to make a decision. You can't wait until all the information is in, because all the information will never be in. Are you willing to sit down and say, "I can make a hard decision, like closing the birthing center, because there's no money"? Or do we wanna simply say, "Everybody wants this, but no one wants to pay for it"? You're gonna have that choice here in the city. You can talk about a roundabout, you can talk about putting roadways in, you can talk about police service, but unless you're willing to go out and convince the voters that they have to pay and bear responsibility, you're not doing a service to us or to yourselves. So, just how you address that question of, when do you make a decision and how do you go about it?
So, I'll go. Yeah, so, thank you for your question, and it, immediately when you were speaking, one of my momisms came into mind, and it's something that I, that I, that I also always use in my service. And I used to tell my children, they would stand in front of the McDonald's, you know, kiosk, and they'd be, "Okay, what do you want"? And every single one of my children know, it's nice to be right, but it's necessary to decide. So, I do not have a problem making a decision. I definitely feel that decisions have to be made. I think that, and I'm gonna put words into John's mouth, I'll just speak for myself, when I talk about making sure that there's a voice at the table, and making sure that you're hearing all sides, and making sure that you are, that you are putting out information to the public, and giving them an opportunity in the process to have, to have some kind of an input, doesn't mean that you forestall the process until oblivion, and you don't make a decision. I think that you have the public sessions, and I did this when I was mayor. You make sure that they are publicized, that people have an opportunity to come in, but at the end of the day, a decision must be made. And there are going to be people who agree, and there are going to be people who disagree. But your decision as elected official is to make a great decision based on great facts.
I appreciate the question, and I know you can appreciate this answer. I've been a public school administrator for nearly 20 years. I have to make difficult decisions every day as a part of the work I do. Over the past 10 years, as RPA has gone from 150 students to 900 students, I've been responsible for every dollar that gets spent there, and I have to make hard decisions about how to spend those dollars, on personnel, on healthcare, on benefits. And so, I'm comfortable making decisions. That's, that's what I do. But the best way to do that, though, is to make sure you're listening to people that are affected by those decisions, listening to people that have input on those decisions. Sometimes, as an elected official, I think it's possible to get caught in an echo chamber, where you're surrounded by people that just tell you what you wanna hear, surrounded by people that tell you the same things you're thinking. And I think the best leaders bring people together who have disparate ideas, and listen to those ideas to formulate the best ideas. There's no need in government to wait until all the information is entirely in to make the most safe decision. That's not, that's not what an elected official should do. But any elected official that does not engage those who disagree with them, fails to do the job adequately. I'm not running for city council because I represent a specific constituency. I'm running for city council because I'm willing to take on the responsibility to make decisions on behalf of all the people of Redmond, and in the best interest of this community that we all love.
So, I've been putting up flags for our patriotic displays since I moved here. I'm a member of the by-committee for the city. I can tell you that it depends heavily on a very small group of people who are getting overused. And I'm wondering what you think a possible role for the city might be to help continue this tradition in a way that involves the whole community and not just five or six people?
Well, I appreciate the question. I think it really reaches to a larger question about how do you, in a community of our size, sustain community service when it's a, a small group of folks that are at the same things? I mean, when I, when I first got here 14 years ago and was going around meeting everybody, I remember going to a meeting at one place, and everybody saying, "Hey, I've got a meeting coming up." And we basically, the whole group walked across the street and met in the next meeting. And some of you that are volunteers in our community recognize that, right? Like, you show up, and it's the same people at the same place just doing the same thing. So, the question to me is, how do we get more people to feel as if they have a role in this? One of the ways is I think we have to be explicit about how you get involved. An example of that is that we have open public comments at city council meetings. But we need to do a better job of explaining to people how that process works, not only that it's there and that they're welcome to come, but what do they do when they get there, and what happens with that information? Because when people know how to get involved, they're more likely to get involved. And I think about something like the flag program. People need to understand who does that and how it happens, right? I've worked in schools long enough and spent some time as an elementary school principal. Sometimes, we just think things magically happen, right? We wake up one morning, and, "Oh, all the flags are put up. How'd that happen"? Well, it's a bunch of dedicated people doing the work. But if we go out and we educate our community about who does it, how you do it, how do you get involved? There's people that wanna do things. They just don't necessarily know how to get involved. And I think it's incumbent upon us to do a better job as elected officials, as leaders in the community, as volunteers, to express to people, "Here's how you can get involved. Here's what you need to do." And having those conversations in a public manner will help people engage with those types of activities, I think.
I agree with John, but I'd like to take it one step further. I believe that as an elected official, that it is one of your duties to show up. I think that showing up for your community is a big part of the reason that people will vote for you. When I served in the, in the position in Sherwood, I made it a point to show up. I went to all of the library cleaning days and the cleanup the road days, and the, you know, whatever it is that was going on in many of the different groups, I made the point in my schedule, and I'm very fortunate to be able to serve full-time. And so, I think that that is something that kind of generates that excitement. They're, they say, "Well, you know, if Clark Endicott is there, well, you know, I should be there." And it encourages others, and then I would, I would post it on my Facebook, and I would generate excitement around the service itself, and I would talk about it in the service groups and in the younger groups with the Girl Scouts. I did a lot of Girl Scout troop visits, and I also did, did a lot of the second grade tours where the children would come in, and I talked about how the city government officials, they're public servants. That, that is the position. The position is a position of service, and you want, as a public servant, to make your community a better community. And if that means rolling up your sleeves and being part of the One Tree For All program on a super rainy day, which luckily, we don't have that many of those here, then that's what you do. And I actually also believe in including the children. My children, poor little souls. I drug around to all of the events, and by golly, I think they're better people for it, because they were invested in their community at that point, and their friends were encouraged to come. And I think that that is a big way that a public official can, can really encourage their community and get their community involved in all of the great philanthropic programs and institutions that we have already here in Redmond, is show up.
Good question.
Well, I've got another one. We have a wonderful park system here in Redmond, and we can add to it because we have system development charges, but we've been struggling to actually maintain the older parks we have. And I'm not casting blame there, because I was part of the budget committee that decided to continue the current level of funding. But what can we do to speed up the process of upgrading our older parks?
Oh, yeah? Okay, great. I'll go. Yeah. So, the city budget is a delicate little thing. It's a circle. And so, everything is in the circle, and there are competing interests in that circle. And so, every year, as, as he spoke about, we get together as a community and as a council, and we talk about the budget, and you make difficult decisions. And it might be that you need six more police officers, but what are you giving up? And so, this is, this is where the difficult conversation starts in budgeting. And every year, as we grow as a city, more money does come in to the city. And so, we do have an opportunity, as we grow, to offer more services. But they are still, they're defined. So, you, you have to, as a city, provide water, sewer. And so, there are things that must be provided within the circle, and then you have a slice of it that is discretionary. And so, I think that, I'm sure that parks maintenance is way up there. I know that the excitement of, say, the pump park that we just opened, and I know that your group was extremely supportive of that, and financially supportive. Thank you very much for that. You can really get those civic organizations involved with that. Maintenance isn't as exciting. That's really something that goes into the, into the shelf of the circle. And so, I think that the more that we talk about providing the services, it's important. It's important to keep, keep up with what we have provided and make it safe for our community.
Well, parks, I think, are currently part of our community. They're places where people come together, places where our young people can gather, places where people can recreate, and I think it's important that we maintain our parks in a manner that encourages people to come be a part of our community. The difficult decisions happen during that budgeting process around what money goes where, and I, and I think, Jim, you were part of this, the budget committee, and one of the things I did this year was challenge staff to look at their assumptions, right? What are the assumptions that go into building a budget? Because any time you're building a municipal budget or a public schools budget, for example, everything's based upon estimates, right? We're taking our best guess at how much money we think's gonna come in, and we're taking our best guess at what we think it's gonna cost. And what you, how you make those best guesses are based upon the estimates and the assumptions that you make. And I think it's really important that we continually question the assumptions that go into a budget, so that we get to a better sense of how we're going to spend our money. And that process this year, in questioning those assumptions, led to us allocating more money for public safety, which was a concern that was publicly voiced for a good period in time before that. I think as we go into the, the budget process for next year, where parks has to be a part of that conversation about, we know that it takes about $600,000 to renovate a park the way we've done with, with a couple of our parks, and we've gotta ask the question, what kind of cycle do we want our, our parks to be on? Is it one park every two years? Is it a park every year? Is it one park every four years? We have to ask that question, and then make the difficult decision about how we put that together. But it's clear that, that parks are an important part of our community. One of the things I think we've done successfully when we do planned developments is require that parks get built in there and maintained, and so, a continued focus on that as well will, will help us, I think.
We got time for one more? Well, I have someone. Well, someone else wanna ask me?
Carl.
Carl.
Well, I appreciate Chrissiana's statement that Redmond isn't Bend and Bend isn't Redmond. However, we're near enough Bend that we know what's going on there, and some people in southeast Bend are facing up to $25,000 in charges to hook up to the sewer. What's happening in Redmond when houses are built? What kind of systems, the charges that they pay to hook up to our sewer system? Who's finished that?
So, we have an SBC system. I can't quote for you right now what those numbers look like, so I'm not, I don't wanna speak out of turn on that. We do know that we've gotta make sure that when we assess, when we assign system development charges, and when we look at the cost of building houses, that we make sure that it's fair and affordable in every, in every way we can. We know that we rely on system and development charges to do the, the work that comes with the development. We've gotta build roads, we've gotta build sewers, and that cost has to be, has to be shared in that process. So, I can't, I'm not familiar with what the Bend payment is. I haven't seen that, those numbers, so I can't comment much further than that. So, but I apologize for not being able to.
I have seen the, I don't have a lot to add, because it's really, the answer is the system development charges. But I think that Redmond does a very good job, and I saw the article on that, and I believe that it was because it was an older neighborhood, and they had not utilized those system development charges to actually serve, and they didn't require it of whatever the developer was. Now, I'm guessing on that, because it was a very short news clip, and I didn't read up on that anymore, because it was Bend. But in Redmond, I do know that the city of Redmond is, is very good about making sure that when a developer comes in, because I, I serve on the, I'm the vice chair of the planning commission here in Redmond, and when a developer comes in, there are requirements that they must meet. They must pay the system development charges, and then they must meet those requirements
meet. They must pay the system development charges. And then they must meet those requirements of bringing in the water sewer, putting in sidewalks. And you'll notice that on the newer developments that there's not only sidewalks, but there's also some nice fencing. And there are, it's very good landscape. And there, it's, so it becomes a beautification of the entire neighborhoods around it. And it also becomes an area that each one of them have pump parks. And so, it's an area that not only that neighborhood can use, but also the surrounding neighborhoods. If you want to take a, take a walk with your stroller and go on down to the neighborhood, park a park next door, you're certainly able to do that. And I think that with that increase in our, you know, population, there are the benefits of having the new neighborhoods come in that do meet those requirements, that do pay the system development charges, and that do improve the quality of the neighborhoods that are surrounding.
It's 12:43, so you have to go.
I have to go. So, can I just close really quick?
Sure.
Because I'm so sorry. But I have my JA group, which is sort of ironic. Today is about interviewing and being professional interview. And so, I'm not the best example of that. But I've instructed students that they need to come prepared with their interview skills. It's been a pleasure speaking with you today. I would love to be your next city councillor. I love the service and I love the city of Redmond.
Oh, there was going to be, there was going to be clapping, because I thought you were going to.
You want to close, John?
Sure, sure. Yeah. And if I had a dollar for every time somebody left the room when I was speaking, I'd be a rich man. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to you today. And I know many of you have questions. And I'd be happy to talk to you, you know, afterwards about any questions you have. You know, when, when you think about voting for municipal elections, right? If you're trying to find somebody that agrees with you on everything, you probably should vote for yourself. But even then, you might not agree for yourself all the time. And so, I would never sit here, and I hope no candidate ever does, and says, "I've got all the answers to this. I got it all figured out." What I know is that I've spent nearly 25 years running complex organizations in schools. And I've built a multimillion-dollar nonprofit in the middle of Redmond. And I'm proud of that. And I'm proud that we got to do it in Redmond. And so, I'm prepared to, to take that experience and bring it to the city council like I have been for the past 11 months. I think this is an amazing place. And I tell people all the time, we, Redmond has always been amazing. And we're on the precipice of even becoming more amazing. When you walk around downtown and you see what's happening and you feel the energy and you feel the growth. You know, I'm excited to tell you, my brother works in the golf industry and his wife works in the medical fields. And they're looking for a place to move. And I've talked them into moving to Redmond. They're going to move to Redmond with my niece and nephew, little babies, they're here to start in next year. And they had a chance to go anywhere. But they've, they picked Redmond because they want to be part of a community like this that has a hometown feel and where you know your neighbor. But there's, there's enough to do that it feels like a great place to live and work and raise a family. And so, I'm excited for about, for what Redmond holds, for the future for us. And I want to be a part of that. And whether I'm elected or not, I'm going to still be here and I'm still going to be a part of it. I just hope that over the past 11 months, I've earned your trust and you have faith in my ability to, to be well reasoned and to, and to make good decisions and do so in the best interest of our community. And I, and I hope that you would support me in doing that. You know, I think there's, this process has taught me a great deal about our community. And that is that there are hundreds and thousands of people here that have keen interest in something, right? Everyone here has a keen interest in something. And I think the great part about being a city like this is we can, we can work to address all of those keen interests. It's hard and it's a lot of work, but I've never shied away from that. And I don't intend to do so as your city councillor. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I'd be happy to talk with you later. And I certainly would appreciate, appreciate your vote on Tuesday. And so, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ready for the business program?
Ready for the business program.